And I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Galt?
Present.
Commissioner Kayler?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins? Mayor Paxton?
Present. Thank you. We have Dr. Don Watkins here with us tonight, who's going to give our invocation. If you'll come on up to the podium, we're going to let you do that. And then I'd like to ask Commissioner Abraham at the end of that to do the pledge of allegiance. So if everybody would please stand.
Just join me in prayer. Our God and Father, thank you for raising up this nation. Thank you for then raising up this state and then this city. And I thank you for your watch care over it all these many years. We pray, Lord, your blessing on our city. We pray that you would bless those who are departing office, those who are taking office, those who serve in every department for our citizens. We pray, Lord, that you would protect our city from those forces that will harm our children or harm our values, harm our morals, and that you will provide, as a compliment to the city government, provide those who practice self-government and that families will practice family government and that together we'll have a, we need to have a thriving city that is a pleasure to live in and a blessing to those who are here. We make this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don, thank you very much. Don is Commissioner Watkins' brother, and so he didn't get Commissioner Watkins here even to hear his brother say the invocation. So I don't know. What can we say? But thank you very much for coming. Okay, Mr. City Manager, any additions or deletions?
There are none.
Thank you. Well, we had a wonderful Christmas parade this year. The weather was great. The crowds were wonderful. The floats were wonderful. The restaurants did well. The retail merchants did well, and I think the people in the parade had a wonderful time. So it was truly a night to behold and to enjoy in the start of the Christmas season. So we are here to present some awards, and we have Amy Clark, who did a magnificent job on the parade, and Mark here, Thompson. So it's up to you all.
We have six divisions that we're going to award prizes for tonight. First, second, and third places also win money in addition to their trophies, and we'll present those checks tonight as well. And I'd like to say thank you for everybody that participated and everybody that came out. It was definitely by far the largest crowd I've seen since I've been here, and that's, you know, always a good problem to have, so. First, we're going to start with the bands. Second place was McCracken County Mustangs. And we have a trophy and a check for $200 for you guys. First place was Paducah Tillman Band of Blue. And you guys will also have a check for $300. We only have one entry in our drill team, and they are repeat winners usually, and that is the Mayfield Elementary Cheerleaders. For our school float division, we have... Damar College won third place. Murray State Paducah won second place. And the Paducah Public Schools Transportation Department won first place. For our non float division, third place was Center Stage Dance Studio. Second place was the Purchase Area Antique Tractor Club. And first place was Independence Bank. For our religious float division, we have, third place was Harmony Baptist Church. Second place, Amazing Grace Lutheran Church. First place, St. Matthew Lutheran Church. In our final division, the themed float division, we award five places in this category. Fifth place was Pizza Inn. Fourth place was Highland Cumberland Presbyterian Church. Third place was Girl Scouts Reedland Service Unit. Second place, American Red Cross. And first place was the Cub Scout PAC-20.
And the whole group's coming, they have their picture made with the mayor.
Again, thank you all very much for helping us make this a great parade.
That float in particular was near and dear to our hearts at Paducah Park Services because that was the entrance to Noble Park. It was gorgeous. It really was. They did a great job. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody, for being part of our parade. You did a wonderful job. Thank you. Paducah is very fortunate to have a group like the ambassadors who represent Paducah so well. Anytime we have a special event anywhere in the city, anywhere from an economic development prospect to the boats coming in, whatever it might be, our ambassadors are there with their red coats on, they're smiling. They make Paducah a better place. And so it's good to have you all here. I know there's a lot more of you. I know you're also going to work the park tonight and raise some money and bring in some canned goods, and we appreciate that. But we have Marty and Cheryl here to give a little report on, an update on the ambassadors. So at this point, if you all would like to come forward?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Paxton and Commissioners, Marty and I are here this evening to give you a little update about what we have done in the past year. And what we wish to do is to thank you, all of you, for your assistance in helping us to perform our volunteer duties for the city. We thank you very much for providing office space for us, which is really a big help. The ambassadors volunteered approximately 4,600 hours in the last fiscal year. And we did that by volunteering, by greeting visitors to the city. We have people at the gazebo. We worked the home show, the quilt show, the arts festival. We do mural tours for adults and children. We have city tours, and sometimes we even get on the buses when the riverboats request us to, when they're running short. And we do greet the visitors that come off the riverboats. We do ground breakings, ribbon cuttings. We have open houses. We work barbecue on the river. We always have a great time at all of the events. We also do the city commission meetings. We're at Veterans Day, Salvation Army bell ringers. We do Christmas in the park, and we are ushers at focus series at the college. We also work at museum, as museum guides and various other activities as we are requested. And we just wanted to thank you for being so supportive of our organization, and we really do appreciate it very much. And I'm going to turn it over to Marty.
Okay. Marty?
Mr. Mayor, the real reason we're here tonight is because we're here to honor an individual that has served his community and his city, and we would like him to come down right now, and that would be you, Mr. Mayor.
It'd be me, okay.
The man of the hour.
Mr. Mayor, Paducah ambassadors, Cheryl myself, I thank you for all you've done for the city, and you are a dedicated individual. For the past 12 years, you have worked for the city, put in projects, and in the years to come, we want to see how they all turn out. Thank you very much for that. Also, by doing that, you have supported ambassadors, and we want to thank you for that. We believe without you and their help, we wouldn't be where we are today. Again, you being ambassador of the city, and you are number one ambassador of the city, and we would love to take you off, or number one ambassador throughout the city. We want to thank you for that also. Ambassador, ambassador, we thank you and we'll show up on you. Honorary Paducah ambassador. Thank you, Mayor.
You're going to have a red coat.
Good in red.
He's going to look good in red. That's right.
Slip on their red coat like they do at the ambassador.
Well, thank you all very much. We appreciate you very much. Thank you. Oh, I lose?
Sue? Sue's Margaret's Aunt Carol, and she might have something for you.
Regardless of what's commissioned, thank you.
I'm going to present to you this Congressional Record for you, from Senator Mitch McConnell, and it says on here, "To my good friend Bill Paxton, a gratitude for all you have done for Paducah." And it actually goes on, there's a very long, long tribune to you that was in the Congressional Record, and I'm not going to read that, though.
Well, great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate you. All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate you. Very nice.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you. That's very nice.
Very nice. Appreciate it. Didn't cost me much money to have, to pay them to say those things. All right, we will move on. Commissioner Abraham, the minutes?
I move that the reading of the minutes for November 27th, 2012, city commission meeting be waived, and that minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Commissioner Galt, motions?
I move that the following bids be received and filed. Bids, engineering, public works department, preservation and renovation of Market House and the River Discovery Center, Ray Black and Son, Inc., Midstates Construction, Inc.
Second. I'm sorry.
No, I had to swallow. Noble Park Pool renovations, Phase Two project concessions and hot water to restrooms, Midstates Construction, Inc., Pinnacle, Inc., Crouch Building Associates, Vanguard Contractors.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. There's a resolution that I have. It's a declaration of official intent to reimburse advances made for capital outlays, Noble Park Pool renovation, Tell-Tech Services building, floodwater engineering slash design, and other capital outlays and related costs to be made from subsequent borrowings. So I move that a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Making Declarations of Official Intent With Respect to Reimbursement of Temporary Advances Made for Capital Expenditures to Be Made from Subsequent Borrowings," be adopted.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? We got Mr. Perkins here. Are you wanting to make some comments?
I just want to make one comment. I don't want to delay the vote. Simply put, if we make capital expenditures prior to having bond proceeds in hand, we can pay ourselves back.
Right. Right. Any questions for Mr. Perkins? You think you can count on Mayor Kayler and this commission to do that?
To do what, sir?
Just playing with you, no?
I just was curious what you were thinking.
No, no, I'm just having some fun here. All relaxed and, you know, just enjoying myself.
Feeling all honored.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Can't wait to the last meeting.
In all seriousness, John, you may want to explain to the general public why we do that because it is...
Well...
It could be a little confusing.
Okay. We'll make it as simple as I can. The purpose of the reimbursement resolution is really a compliance issue that the U.S. Treasury requires that we do. It's a technical thing. And basically, if, if on these projects that we're going to take on, if we spend any capital money prior to having bond funny, funny, money in our pockets, we can pay ourselves back. So if we spend it in advance, then we can pay ourselves back when we get the money. Otherwise, you can't.
Yeah. Thank you, Carol. I thought that was good, that the public understand it because we're talking about quite a bit of money here. So... Any questions? All right. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Thank you, John. Municipal orders, personnel action, Mayor Pro Tim Kayler.
Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Pretty self-explanatory, isn't it, Cindy?
It is.
Not a lot to talk about.
Just one.
Okay. Any questions for Cindy?
She said just one?
Just one.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. No.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Thank you, Cindy. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Necessary to Obtain a 2013 Matching Insurance Service Safety Grant Award to the, in the Amount of $6,000 from the Kentucky League of Cities for the Purchase of Playground and Safety Equipment for the Paducah Parks Services Department," be adopted.
Second.
Mark?
Pretty self-explanatory. If we get the $6,000, then we'll be, we'll match it with internal funds we have in our budget.
And these, these playground equipment will go in Noble Park?
No, these are, basically, we're talking about the manufacturer, the wood chips that go in, and we'll use those at Cobb Park and at Stewart Nelson Park. The others are safety vests and equipment for when the fellows are working out on the roads, and so they can be seen.
Got you. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Commissioner Galt?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Approving and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the Statement of Compliance with National Bridge Inspection Standards, Bridge Posting Requirements for Paducah, Kentucky, Certifying Bridges Within the City Limits of Paducah Are Posted with Safe Flow Capacities," be adopted.
Second.
Okay, Rick. Pretty self-explanatory, right?
Mayor Commission, it's something we do annually. The Highway Department has a bridge inspector that inspects all of our bridges and culverts in, within the city and within the county, and then those that need to be posted at a rate less than they would normally have, and you only have one, and that's the one at 24th Street, and it's posted at 14 tons.
Okay. Any questions for Rick? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Got ordinances and adoptions? Mayor Pro Tim Kayler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting a Bid of Bluegrass Uniforms for the Purchase of Uniforms for Police Department Employees and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah accepts the bid of bluegrass uniforms for police department employees and the Paducah Police Department at unit prices submitted for a period of two years, beginning January 1st, 2013, and ending December 31st, 2014, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Okay, we talked about this. Any questions? All right. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Ordinances and introductions. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Declaring Municipally-Owned Real Property Generally Located at 5514 Reedland Road, Held for the Use and Benefit of the Commissioners of Waterworks of the City of Paducah, DBA Paducah Water and Surplus, and Approving the Sale and Transfer of Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows. In this ordinance, the City of Paducah declares municipally-owned real property generally located at 5514 Reedland Road, Paducah, Kentucky, as surplus, and approves the sale of the surplus real property for $66,000 in accordance with the auction purchase contract dated November 27, 2012. The subject property was originally acquired by the Reedland Water District and by virtue of acquisition is now owned by the city for the use and benefit of the Commissioners of Waterworks of the City of Paducah, DBA Paducah Water. The subject property is no longer necessary or in the best interest of the operation of the waterworks. This ordinance further authorizes the mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the use and benefit of Paducah water to execute and deliver a special warranty deed of conveyance of the surplus property.
Second.
Welcome, Glenn.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. Good to have you with us. Any comments?
This property was the old Reedland Water District office. Behind the office, they had their water plant, and they had a couple of wells on the property. And when we sell this property, this will wind up the transition of Reedland from the Reedland water sources to the Paducah water sources, which we did in 2009 and '10. And so when we sell this property, that will wind up that total project in full. So the Reedland office, the plant has been tore down, the land has been restored, and it was not needed for our operation. So chiropractor that works in Leadbetter wants to move his office to Reedland and bought the property in auction. So we recommend that you sell that and approve the ordinance.
Good. Any questions? While you're up here, why don't you give us a quick update on your new headquarters?
Okay. Our new office is about complete. All we lack right now is the flooring material. That should be done in the next couple of weeks. We have some lighting to do. That lighting came in today and should be done in the next week, next few days. We plan to open at that site at 1800 North 8th Street on February the 4th. So all we're waiting now is for furniture to arrive and be installed in the building. And at that time, then we will close our office at 401 Washington and open on February the 4th, which is a Monday, at 1800 North 8th Street. So that's a project that we acted as our own general contractor on. We subbed out components of the project. We started on it in July, and the building is basically finished except for some cosmetics, flooring, and some lighting. So we're very proud of it. It's a building we think... So we're very proud of it, it's a building we think will last for the next 50, 75 years, and it is on our water plant site, so if customers come down there, they would come down to our water plant on North, North 8th Street, right beside the big clear well that you can't hardly miss beside the radio station, and in front of that's our new office building. It's 5,760 square feet, we've kind of outgrown our, our office we'd been in since 1970, and that property is now for sale.
Any takers on that?
We've had some interesting calls, but we have not had anybody step up to say they are ready to write a check for it yet, so, so we haven't had a taker yet, no. But it is advertised, and we do have signs for it, and we hope to sell that in a few months.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Madam Clerk, if you'll, no, this is an introduction, isn't it? Good. Thank you, appreciate the explanation. Okay, Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 114 Utilities of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Relating to the Use of Public Sewers." This ordinance is summarized as follows, Chapter 114, Article 2, Section 31-237 of City of Paducah Code of Ordinances currently contains a sewer use ordinance. As part of its five-year license renewal, JSA is required to update certain portions of its sewer use ordinance. This revised ordinance includes an updated definition for the term "significant industrial user," new discharge parameters for use of public sewers, and establishes revised standards for significant non-compliance with the ordinance.
Second.
Good to have you with us, John.
How are you? I thought everybody here was for me, but evidently not.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So what do we got?
Basically, it's summarized pretty well, on page eight, there's a definition change for significant industrial user. We have a handful of what you would term significant industrial users in Paducah, Western Baptist is one of them, Lourdes Hospital is another one. That is an EPA requirement, that was as a result of an audit. It really doesn't change the ordinance, it's just the way they want it worded. The pretreatment limits that we changed as a requirement of our new permit application is on page 12, those are predominantly more favorable than the limits that we had. And then on page 14 again, is a, for our significant industrial users, there's a definition change that's an EPA requirement for when you are in significant non-compliance. Essentially, once again, it's the same verbiage, they just want it stated the way they want it stated. So that is a summary, as best as I can, I can answer for you, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions for John?
I have, I have a question, it has nothing to do with what Commissioner Galt just read. But can you talk a little bit about the smell of the, of the sewer?
Sure.
Because, well, let's just, let's see, back Halloween night, for instance, we got cra, people like all over Jefferson.
Right.
Right, from Jefferson Street over.
Right.
The event was great, the smell was horrible.
Right, well, I can, I can answer a lot of that. What you have along Jefferson Street is what you call combined sewer, and a lot of that odor that you're talking about is drought-related. What happens is, combined sewer carries a storm into sanitary, so all the curb inlets that you have down the street have a trap in it that's supposedly supposed to be filled with water, and that's to keep sewer odor from leaking out of the sewer and coming out the curb inlets. What you have, the problem with any infrastructure that's 100 years old, those curvulence are built of brick, and so over a long period of time, it's either going to evaporate or leak out. What you have to do is, you have to maintain those curb inlets, you have to keep water in them, and maintain your traps to keep that from happening.
So, how do you?
How do you do that?
Yeah.
When people call in for an odor complaint on that, it's actually a requirement of the public works to go out and fill those curvulence with water. Or they might tell the homeowner to do it, it's just a mixture of that. That's, that's generally what, what is the cause, to the best that I know.
So I should talk to Rick?
You should talk to Rick. But I didn't know if you were talking about the Greenway Trail, because you're building a new greenway for our, our treatment plant.
No.
We're going to need to have a sign that says, "Walk briskly for a certain distance," but then everything should be fine.
Yeah, I've already mentioned that.
Oh, and I, and I've seen that.
Pick up the pace.
You know, the reason I mention that, because it, it, it really is, it's, it's, it's horrible.
Right.
And, yeah, like, I've been living over where I live for, I don't know, like, I'm about, about 20 years, and then, well, it doesn't matter if it's in the summer, spring, it doesn't matter, it's, the smell is terrible. So I've had folks ask me about that.
Right. That's what you need to do, is, is you've got to maintain the water level in those curvulence, and if they're, if they're broken, or bricks have grout or whatever issues, then you just need to grout them up. I mean, that's, basically, you have to maintain those in order to keep that from, from happening.
Okay.
Rick's right behind me.
Okay.
I don't know what to tell you.
That, that was a night.
I don't know what to tell you. Pulling that out of his pocket. Now, the other issue that you can talk about, I mean, anytime you have a drought, sewer odor is going to be worse, that's just how it goes. The more air you have in your sewer flow, the less it's going to smell. You have a drought, you're going to have less rainwater, which is what primarily puts the air back into your sewer flow. So always gets better in the winter, always gets worse in the summer.
What do you have to add, Rick?
Sorry, bud, I don't know what else to say, I mean, it is what it is.
What John is explaining is exactly correct. Where, where we draw the line between JSA and the City of Paducah is where our, I guess, lateral for those curb inlets ties into the combined sewer, from that point out, it's the city's responsibility, they have the main on the combined sewer. The easy fix is, I guess, better preparation, in the sense of, if we know we're going to have something like that, and we're going to have a huge concentration of people for that, and if we've been paying attention to the weather, normally, we don't pay attention to droughts, we're more concerned with heavy rainfall. But there is, there is a fix for that, and if we've had drought, we've had, have opened fire plugs up before, and just let them fill the mains, and refill, or, excuse me, refill those inlets and re-trap the gas, and then Mother Nature takes care of the rest.
But you're always chasing it.
Right, but the other thing is, is sometimes that trap is broke off, and the traps that are broke off, we have to repair those.
Okay.
But there, there is, there is, I guess, a little bit of preparation that we could do, and that's something that we did not do, so.
I think the best thing to do is to call in.
Right.
If you have that, then, then they're going to know.
Because a lot of times, what, what will happen, when we get a complaint like that, Commissioner, we'll go out and pop the lid, and if, if the trap is in place, and we can see the end of the trap and the water's dropped down, the solution is fill it with water, and it solves the problem.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions for John? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'll see you next week.
All right. Okay, Commissioner Kayler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of Midstates Construction Company, Inc., for the Noble Park Pool Renovations Phase II Project, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Midstates Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $139,607 for the Noble Park Pool Renovations Phase II Project, which includes work for the concession stand upgrade, and inclusion of hot water to each of the restrooms, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same."
Second.
Okay, Mark?
It's pretty much self-contained there, we're, we're moving on with the project and getting that section of it done, we'll have one more bid coming towards you, which will be the spray features.
Any questions for Mark on that? All right, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance, an ordinance accepting a grant award from Kentucky Fire Sprinkler Association Foundation for funding for the Fire Department's Junior Fire Setter Intervention Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby accepts a grant award in the amount of $2,500 from the Kentucky Fire Sprinkler Association Foundation for funding for the Fire Department's Juvenile Fire Setter Intervention Program. This award does not require any local matching funds.
Second.
Pretty self-explanatory, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it is. Fortunately, we're the rece, I think this is the second time we've received this from the Sprinkler Coalition, we're very appreciative of their support of our program, and we'll continue to take it as long as they'll give it.
Good, good. Any questions for Chief Cow?
About how many kids do you have in those classes?
We average about 10 to 15, whenever we have one, we've had about four, we've had kids throughout the region, all the way as far as Fulton, some Livingston County, it's a, it really is a regional operation now, is, and we've gotten that support from those other counties to, to take care of sending the kids to our program, and some of the grant money that we've received, that you all received here a few months ago, from the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant, was in support of that regional effort. So we really feel like we're making a difference with the program.
Good deal, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting a Grant Award from the Walmart Foundation Facility Level Giving Program for Funds to be Used for the Paducah Fire Department Juvenile Fire Setter Intervention Program." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby accepts a grant award in the amount of $1,000 from the Walmart Foundation Facility Level Giving Program to assist the Paducah Fire Department in funding the Juvenile Fire Setter Intervention Program. The award does not require any local matching funds.
Second.
Same thing.
Same thing again here, Mayor, our department has benefited from the Walmart Foundation many times, the Police Department as well, we almost have gotten to now where we kind of have to take turns in applying for it, so that we can, we can receive it and take advantage of it. But again, a fine supporter of our program, and we appreciate their support.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Mr. Kayler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of Ray Black &amp; Son, Inc., for Preservation and Renovation of the Market House and River Discovery Center, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same and Authorizing the Finance Director to Transfer Funds to the Rental Property Repairs Upkeep Account." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Ray Black &amp; Son, Inc., in the amount of $215,927 for the Preservation and Renovation of the Market House and River Discovery Center, authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same, and authorizes the finance director to transfer funds in the amount of $87,800 from the Facilities Maintenance Account to the Rental Property Repairs Upkeep Account.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Rick?
Mayor Commission, this is a comprehensive project between the two buildings that we lease out to our community that have leases there. We've noticed an ongoing problem with the Market House as far as its curb appeal, and it is dingy, it needs some attention for, well, we've been talking about it for about two years now. And then also, the River Heritage Museum is suffering from the abutments, that's those brick, I guess, structural members that move above the roof, they're in great need of tuck pointing that's leaking into the building. So the, this contract will take care of both historic properties, and both of the, I guess, the contracts have been let with a historic preservation, I guess, sensitivity to the building, so that, you know, it's, everything is done historically correct, and the period for the buildings for that. Purpose for the moving of the money is, we had insufficient funds, obviously, in the rental account on those buildings, so we pulled the monies together to complete those buildings, so we can pretty much say we're finished with those buildings for several years.
I am so happy, thank you so much, Rick, and city manager, for working this out to make it happen, I mean, it's, it's been needed, like you said, we've talked about this for two years.
Well, actually, working with the landlords, city manager has been working with the tenants there at the Market House, and I've been working with Julie Harris, the museum curator, they, they're all concerned, rightfully so, but it's just a matter of timing and money, and I guess, based on the vote, you can thank yourselves, that we're just going to execute the project.
And the bird control, too. I like that portion.
Oh, one thing, one thing we learned, I, I'm glad you brought that up, one thing we learned on that project, the staining, that's, the black staining that's coming down on the limestone trim, actually, that was from a, I guess, a pigeon repellent.
Oh.
There's a product called Tanglefoot, and it's a, it's a petroleum-based product, and it's, kind of think about it, it's all in the name, it's sticky, it's tacky, and then when a pigeon would land on it, it would tangle its talons, you know, but when you get in the summertime, it gets hot, the petroleum base starts running, and then it ran down on the limestone, and then any dust or anything would stick to it, and, but actually, we're going to do our best we can to remove that. We try to spot, remove it, and there's a product out there that you mix with water in certain concentrations, and you can scrub it down, and it will, it will clear the most of it. Will it be perfect? No. Will it look better? It'll look a heck of a lot better.
Any other questions? All right, good job, good luck.
Good luck to you.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 2012-11-7990," entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of McBride Mac Sales Incorporated for the Sale to the City of One New 2014 Front-Loading Refuge Collection Truck for the Use by the Solid Waste Collection System, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same." To purchase a 2013 front-loading refuge truck, this ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby amends ordinance number 2012-117990 to purchase a 2013 front-loading refuge collection truck from McBride Mac Sales Incorporated in the amount of $223,696.19 instead of a 2004 front-loading refuge collection truck.
Okay.
Second.
Pretty self-explanatory, right?
Long story short, they quoted a 2014, thought they could get it here on time, and then McBride Mac, that builds the chassis and the frame, said they're not running that until April. We said, "We need the truck now," and they said, "We can supply the 2013 truck for your use for the same price." So we introduced that, but they, they found out they couldn't get the truck made until April, so they said, "Bring the truck now," so we're just doing some paperwork.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you, Rick. Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Rescinding Ordinance Number 2011-67825, and Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky Revised Annual Budget for the Fiscal Year July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012, by Estimating Revenues and Resources and Appropriating Funds for the Operation of City Government." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "The City of Paducah rescinds ordinance number 2011-6-7825, that Estimated revenues and resources and appropriated funds for fiscal year 2011, and adopts a revised budget for fiscal year 2011 that reflects all adjustments made throughout the fiscal year and any adjustments required by the independent financial auditors. The appropriations of city government for a total of $59,146,765." I think I read that incorrectly, but $59,146,765.
That's right.
And summarizes by funds as follows. General, $31,528.70. Small grants, $68,130. MAP, $1,526.50. Investment, $4,646.245. CDBG, $560,360. Telecom, $1023,745. E911, $1,578.30. Court awards, $51,885. Debt, $2,549.160. CIP, $2,619.735. Bond, $1072,890. Solid waste, $4,469,515. Civic center, $71,170. Rental, $128,465. Radio, $199,045. Fleet, $528,560. Fleet trust, $888,055. Self-insurance, $965,535. Health insurance, $4,267,185. Maintenance trust, $19,345. PRA, $223,470. And AEPF- And AEPF, PF, PF Trust: $1,768,820, for a total of $59,146,765.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Perkins?
Mayor Commissioners, the ordinance before you represents the final and completed fiscal year 2012 budget and it reflects and includes all fiscal year 2012 transactions and year-end audit adjustments as required in the fiscal year 12 audit report, which will be presented to you next week.
Okay. Any questions for John Perkins? Okay, thank you. Good job, as always. Okay, Commissioner Keeler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Approving a Contract with Addendum and Contingency Fee Schedule with the Credit Bureau Systems, Inc. for Collecting Delinquent Property Taxes and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Relating to Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the City of Paducah hereby approves a collection service contract with an addendum and contingency fee schedule with the Credit Bureau Systems, Inc. for collecting delinquent property taxes for properties within the city limits. The sole charge to the city shall be 25,000, 25% of all amounts collected except 35% of amounts collected by attorneys from litigations filed on behalf of the city. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary with the Credit Bureau Systems, Inc. The contract and other documents will commence upon execution and continue in effect for one year. Upon expiration, the agreement shall automatically renew each year unless either the city or the Credit Bureau Systems give written notification to terminate the agreements.
Second.
Okay, John?
Mayor Commissioners, in keeping with good business practices, we found it necessary to update our agreement with the Credit Bureau Systems, with whom we've done business for many, many years. This agreement should serve the city well as, as we continue our delinquent property tax collection efforts into the future.
They've done a good job for us in the past.
Yes, sir. They have.
All right, any questions for John? Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Approving and Authorizing the Purchase of Handheld Radios and Accessories for the Paducah Police Department and Authorizes the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the City of Paducah hereby approves and authorizes the finance director to make payment to Motorola Solutions in the amount not to exceed $37,466.80 for the purchase up to 14 Motorola XTS 2500, 800 milli, uh, megahertz portable radios at $2,676.20 each.
Second.
I'm not done yet.
Okay. Welcome, Chief. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. You are talking over there. I thought you were--
Were you, like, getting me back for earlier?
Yeah, you take a breath, we're moving on.
Or the police department, in compliance with the Kentucky State Purchasing Contract Grant Funds, in the amount of $37,000 received from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security will be used for purchase with balance being paid from the Paducah, uh, Paducah Police Department's budget.
Second.
Welcome, Chief.
Good afternoon.
Have you with us.
City manager.
Self-explanatory, right? I mean--
Uh, pretty much so. Uh, when I first came here, I noticed that we had radios that were 20-years-old, which could be a liability to the officer and a liability to the citizens of Paducah. So, during this process, we've been purchasing radios for the last three and a half years and I think we probably have close to 60 new ones once we get these. So, we only have about 18 more to go, but at least we're getting them out there on the street.
Yeah, good deal. Any questions for the chief? Uh, I just wanted to tell you that I don't know what Corey had to give you to, for you to say nice things about me in the paper, but I appreciate it.
Well, I'm speaking the truth.
Well, thank you. Very kind. Appreciate that.
Appreciate you, Mr. Mayor, these 12, a lot of years I've been with you, so those were the truth.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much. Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda and we're to the city manager's report.
Well, it's a lot going on, anything but a quiet December in city government. The opportunity to be out on the newly, well, almost completed bike trail expansion with Rick today and amazing how a big red truck stands out on a bike path that's built on a bike, but, uh, really, really going well. Looking ahead to the next phase of the bike path, I guess that'll be the third one, I want to just give you a heads up, we are going to have a little funding decision to make there. We're going to need to find some additional funds that we didn't anticipate for borrowing under Highway 45, is it there? That could be, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars, but, you know, it's a wonderful system and every city I've been in, hike bike trails have just met with nothing but 100% public applause and use for a variety of reasons throughout. A few of us spent a little time in the former lounge area of the Executive Inn today, which is now city property, and putting together some strategies to, to deal with that and the condition that it's in and, and the potential for some conversion to some use associated with the convention center someday, which is, I, I think, a step up from essentially what has been our position with that space the last few years. So, hope to do some of that with in-house resources, others of it maybe through some salvage rights and hopefully, a smaller part of it with, with actually, you know, contract work. So, a lot of things going on moving forward and a lot of fronts. Our new software program for our performance appraisal system is in and HR starting to kind of learn how to work with a little bit. There's a lot of training that'll go on, but I think that's a project and all that's associated with it is being well-received by the management team and I'm fully confident that in time we will get that fully implemented and begin to realize all the positive aspects of it that, that an employee-based organization can, can get from that. So, is there any questions? That's all I have.
Rick, I know that when, when the Greenway Trail crosses what's Carroll Road, you're going to have, I guess, just blinking lights and signs and people are going to look twice and, and then go across. Is that correct on that?
Actually, we're going to have, I guess, bollards and you'll have to actually go around some things to cross there and we're going to have it well-marked up and down Carroll Road, warning the, the traveling public that there is a crossing coming up. Initially, I don't know that we're starting with a signal. We want to see how, how congested that might get, but we're actually doing it with a physical feature where you can't physically cross the road unless you go through this chicane to be warned on that. You just can't go straight through.
Okay, so my question is, if we can do it to that, until we get to tunnel built on 45, could we not do the same thing on that while the tunnel's being built or until we come up with enough money to build a tunnel?
From a public safety point of view, Mayor, I would not, I could not in good conscience recommend that because of, a bridge approach is totally different than what, what's going on on Carroll Road. You have people in a turn, people are coming from out of state, you don't have a lot of signage on a bridge approach to actually put the signage up to let that, no. I couldn't recommend that to the commission to do, and I don't know, I don't know that the highway department would permit it.
Okay. So, what is the plan then?
Well, we have a couple of options. We have an endowment that the city received some years ago that we're looking into what resources might be available there and from there, we're anticipating a bond issue. So, if it comes to that, then we would build that into it because it's, that, that project needs to be completed the way it's designed so that it, all the benefits from it accrue. Rick, as long as you're up there, I want to kind of keep the commission apprised of the progress and timelines and that kind of thing for the study of the condition of city hall and, and some potential improvements that need to be made. They funded some money in the budget this year for that and I know that you are working or have been on a scope of services for that. Could you kind of elaborate just a little bit on, on where we're headed with that?
Well, what we're looking at on that, Mayor Commission, is the obvious problem is the overhang in the eve and the structural, I guess, concerns we have for the building. Apex Engineering, we have a, a structural engineer that says that that is of paramount concern with the age and the deterioration of that. Well, there's some alternatives for that, to remove it and then put up a steel structure that gives the very same architectural roadside appeal, but it would be lighter and then stronger. Well, you replace the roof as a result of that. Well, now you're into the building seismic zone. We're looking at seismic retrofitting of the building. That does not, you can't notice for that. This room, the, I guess, the decor of the entire building, retrofit of that and/or upgrade of that so that you don't have, I guess, several different, I guess, interior finishes. Your HVAC systems, we have a menagerie and a, a, just a whole lot of different light styles. We're looking at energy consumption to reduce the energy footprint of this building. So, when you start prioritizing the security of the building, whether or not, how we secure the building, much like the courthouse, do we go to that extent? How do we secure the building? So, you've got about five or six priorities for the building and then you could be looking at order of magnitude of, you know, two, two and a half million dollars of a total, you know, total makeover, total retrofit to the building. And we're looking to go with an AE firm that is going to look at all those priorities and then give us some, I guess, break it down, cost per each priority, but then, once you're into one, you might go ahead and do another one because you don't want to necessarily keep tearing the building up. You know, it's kind of like digging up a utility pipe and patching the street and then coming back and digging up another one and then, and then finally paving the road. So, it's, it's, it's one of those things where you try to see what you can manage and see what's necessary now and that's, that's what we're looking to with an AE firm.
Thanks, Rick.
Any questions on that? I've just got one more final question on the Greenway Trail.
Yes, sir.
There's no going back to the state for more money?
I don't know, I don't know the entire answer to that because there are a lot of grant applications or a lot of grant opportunities out there. I don't necessarily know. We have Cheryl that's in the planning department that might have some other avenues of some other grant opportunities there that I may not be--
But as far as Greenway money, specifically Greenway money, there's no opportunity to--
Mayor, I, I can't speak to that.
I think it would be, I mean, we haven't closed the door to it and we'll certainly look into it. I, I think it's not too likely, but it's worth looking into.
Okay.
Have, have, have any of you all been up on, on the portion that is--
I have. It's nice.
I mean, if you were to, where we had the groundbreaking, if you were to start walking there, I mean, it's, it's, and Jeff and I were there today, it's really, really nice and what the grass is growing on it, I think, you know, we'd be really pleased with it.
It, it's going to be nice. I, I am concerned that when you have part of the Greenway Trail in Noble Park and now you're going to have part of the Greenway Trail on the, on the flood wall going to the city, you've got that middle section that if, if-- That thing drags out.
Makes it pretty important, doesn't it?
Makes it pretty important that we finally complete that.
Well, actually, we're looking to bid that, you know, January, February.
Okay. So, you're not planning on it dragging out any because of the lack of money?
Right now, we're--
Well, we want to be resourceful, but at the same time, we, yeah, the project's got to keep going.
Good, good. That's, okay.
It just has to be, it just has to be vetted--
Good.
--to the clearinghouse in Frankfurt and then be ready to bid, but the project is ready to bid--
Good.
Aside from the vetting in Frankfurt.
Good.
And I'd just like to say there are some pretty views of the river on the new section that you've just completed.
Actually, there's what we call bump outs where there'll be two shelters. For example, if you, if you need to get your breath or sit there for a minute--
Oh, you will.
Yeah, there's some shelters, there's some shelters out there that will be put up, two shelters. One is near Burnett Street and one is near, well, it's more downstream, but you can actually sit down and, and observe the, the Brookport Bridge, but it's, it's out over a wide-open cultivated field. It's, it's a nice view.
Okay, good deal. Thank you. When will that be open?
When will that be open? Well, Wilkins Construction is, is finalizing their work and then we need to get the grass and the seeding done. Before Christmas, the project will be done, but there again, are you going to be walking on it during Christmas--
Yeah.
--or during January, but we'll be done before Christmas.
Good, thank you. Commissioner comments?
I have a couple of things.
Okay.
I would just like to mention a couple of really nice things that have happened in our community recently and Chief Barry. One of them is about one of your officers, Officer Long, and I got a phone call from a citizen that he had assisted. They'd had some things taken out of their front yard and they had nothing but good things to say about Officer Long, so I just wanted to commend him for his work. Thank you. Come on up. They said he went above and beyond.
Commissioner, that, that was an outstanding job by that officer to get all of their property back and that was, that was some legwork in the community, so we really thank them for recognizing him because that was a really good police, piece of police work that he did. Definitely very resourceful in getting every, every, every piece back on that, on that burglary, so.
So, tell him we said thanks.
Definitely will.
And, and then another thing I'd like to mention, this week, Paxton Park's membership was, is up to 268 members. It's more than they've ever had, so I would just like to commend the board and for all their hard work that they've done out at Paxton Park.
I think we made the right decision on that. We gave it a lot of time and a lot of attention and they're, they're doing what they said they do and it's building up play and building up membership and that's giving them the resources that they need to, to keep the place open, so it's good.
I have a-- Also, I'd like to comment on the, on our police department, particularly the, the chief. Every Saturday for six weeks, there are six-week blocks, I have an opportunity to mentor some young teenage boys and girls and, and trying to help them, just a piece of trying to help them think about some decisions that they're making and, and I had Chief Barry come on the last day and, and he wasn't in uniform. He was just in the civvies and he was sitting there and, and the kids were talking. They were, it's straight talk. It's, it's not, you know, sugarcoated anything because that, that's not what they need, you know? So, Chief Barry commented after, you know, a little bit and talked to him, straight talk and, uh, when he left, when he left, I, I shared with him that, that I'd like to thank my friend Chief Barry from my police department and they were like-- I said, "Well, it wasn't like he was taking names, man," you know? But I must tell you, I must tell you that after that, after that announcement, the comments were, were all positive because, I don't know, they had a perception in their mind, most dealings that they've had to that point with the police department was not very favorable because they've broken some laws, but for them to have the police chief of the City of Paducah in there talking to them like he, he was sharing, they, they handled that well. Initially, they were like, "What? Can't believe you brought him in here, man." But after that, and we talked about some stuff, they were very appreciative of that, so I wanted to pass that on to you, man.
Okay, any public comments? All right, there is no executive session, so we are adjourned. Thank you.